The regular meeting of Aurora City Council for Monday, January 30th, 2023 is called to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Kaufman.
Here.
Councilmember Bergen. Councilmember Coombs.
Present.
Mayor Pro-Tim Gardner. Councilmember Bergerinsky. Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Marcano.
Present.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Morio. Councilmember Sundberg.
Here.
And Councilmember Zavonic.
Here.
Announcement on the call-in line.
Good evening. City Council welcomes feedback from the public on both matters appearing on the agenda and during public invited to be heard. If you would like to speak on an agenda item and have not already spoken to an operator, please press star three. For those watching on Channel Eight, call eight five five six nine five three four seven five and press star three when connected. You will hear a prompt confirming you are in line to speak to an operator and then be able to continue listening to the meeting. When the operator comes on the line, please be ready to give them your name and agenda item that you wish to speak on. Please keep in mind you must press star three before the city clerk reads the title of the item you are wishing to speak on. The council does not allow comments about any items on the agenda during public invited to be heard, and each speaker is allowed three minutes. Thank you.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos al Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Aurora. Estamos listos para escuchar sus comentarios en la sección de público a ser escuchado. Tenemos servicio de interpretación al español para las personas que así lo requieran. Acercarse a la parte superior del cuarto tenemos ahí el servicio de o el equipo de interpretación. Las personas que se vayan a acercar el micro tienen tres minutos máximo por persona para hablar. Muchísimas gracias y buenas noches.
A moment of silence for Tyree Nichols and his family. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Executive session update. We discussed potential development as well as security issue concerns. Approval of the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes for January 9, 2023.
So moved.
It's removed by Councilmember Bargain, seconded by
Sundberg.
Councilmember Sundberg to approve the minutes of January 9, 2023. Discussion. Seeing none, call for the question on the approval of the minutes for January 9, 2023.
Mayor Kaufman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes to approve the January 9, 2023 meeting minutes.
Acknowledgement, land acknowledgement. The City of Aurora acknowledges that we gather on the territories and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Yoot, Arapaho, and Lakota peoples, past and present. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up this state of Colorado. Indigenous people have remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. As these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard, the ties that these nations have to their traditional homelands and to their vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed. And we are called to be better stewards of the land we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community. Let's see. Number seven, Animal Services, Animal Showcase, Anthony Youngblood, manager of Animal Services.
It's cold.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate you coming and letting us have time to bring down one of our animals here. This who we have here is Freya. She's a four-year-old lab boxer mix. She came to the Aurora Animal Shelter as a owner surrender. She is currently in a foster home awaiting for adoption. She's roughly four years old, about seventy-five pounds. She does great with kids. She's kind of picky if she's going to meet other dog friends until she decides if she likes them first, but I think that's all of us. So this and many other animals are available at the Aurora Animal Shelter. Please look us up online and let us know if you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What's the name? What's the doggy's name? Oh, my mics.
Black employees for a better Aurora, Omar Lyle and Sergeant Kevin Glasio. Can you please come up here?
And they are from the organization Black Employees for a Better Aurora or Bafaba. For Black, this is Black History Month, whereas without the story of African-Americans, the story of America would be incomplete. Black History Month, first proposed by scholar Carter G. Woodson in nineteen twenty-six, seeks to rightfully restore the struggles and triumphs of African-Americans into our national narrative. And whereas during February, our city pauses to reflect on the injustices and struggles fought and overcome by African-Americans throughout our nation's history and to pay tribute to the battles they have fought in the name of equality, such as the Underground Railroad, Emmett Teal's murder, the Woolworth Student and Montgomery Bus Boycotts, Bloody Sunday, and the March on Washington. And whereas, while this work is far from finished, Woodson's vision for Black History Month and all who have taken up this cause have helped tell the whole story of America and everyone who built it. And whereas African-Americans have contributed to the rich fabric and diversity of the City of Aurora and have made significant strides in civil rights, law, medicine, technology, food, music, literature, education, sports, entertainment, journalism, and the arts. And whereas during this Black History Month, let us continue to draw inspiration from the past as we journey forward to a more perfect future in Aurora by remembering the sacrifices and celebrate the contributions made by African-Americans in our community in Colorado and throughout our nation. Now therefore, I, Mike Kaufman, Mayor of the City of Aurora, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of February, 2023, is Black History Month. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Aurora, Colorado, to be affixed this thirtieth day of January, 2023. Thank you. Al, would you leave a few words?
Yes, sir. All right. And just a really quick reminder here. The theme for this year's celebration is going to be stronger together through joy and laughter. Laughter is good for the soul. We're going to hold a celebration, in-person celebration, on Friday, February twenty-fourth, at noon at the Aurora Central Library. So please show up and we will see you there, hopefully. All right.
Thank you very much.
Can I get a photo? There we go. Thank you so much.
Republic invited to be heard.
Yes, Mayor, we have a few people in person. The first individual is Greg Wolf, followed by Alexandra Jackson.
Do I just step up here?
Yes, please.
Thank you. My name is Greg Wolf, and I'm a member of the Colorado Chunkers Association. I'm here today to implore the city to re, to bring back the Punkin-Chunkin' Colorado event. This event takes place in October of each year, and it's a long history that the city has put on from its days over twenty-five years ago back at Delaney Farms. We were limited to a thousand-foot field. About two thousand and five, we were moved to Arapaho County Fairgrounds, where the event took place for several years. We became a sanctioned event in two thousand and five, sanctioned by the WCPCA, which is the World Championship Punkin-Chunkin' Association out of Delaware. And the event has grown by leaps and bounds and becoming an event of such magnitude, we have brought in huge teams from all over the country, as far away as even New Hampshire, set several records here. And it's just a wonderful event. Brings tens of thousands of people. It's just a really fun, family event. All the competitors who come out here, they all agree that the Colorado Punkin-Chunkin' event is the most organized and the best-held event in the country. We didn't have one in twenty and twenty-one, obviously because of COVID. Not sure what happened in twenty-two. Didn't really get a good answer. That's why I'm here today, to ask that you bring it back. There's also a huge potential here. Delaware has not had a world championship since twenty sixteen. They did look for another place. They lost their field. They looked for another place in, they had one in twenty nineteen in Rantoul, didn't go over very well. And I have been told by the Board of Directors of the folks in Delaware, if we have an event here in Colorado, this will be the new home for the world championship event here in Colorado. And Discovery Channel has put on a show every Thanksgiving called Punkin-Chunkin'. They film the event ahead of time, and then they edit it and put it together. This is a huge opportunity for the City of Aurora. I mean, as a Colorado chunker, our main goal is to take this backwards competition and bring it to the twenty-first century by way of on-hands learning and mechanical engineering and all that kind of stuff. Here in Colorado, we have a deep tradition of having the best STEM schools and the best STEM companies. This is a huge opportunity for the City of Aurora. It's already in place. All you have to do is say the word, "Let's get it going again." We have, I believe I'm probably out of time, but as a, the association that I'm involved with, we will work closely with the City of Aurora to make this one of the greatest events. Not only will it be able to put Aurora in just a beautiful light in the state of Colorado, but in the entire nation, all over the world. There's a huge void to be filled here, and I think we have a huge opportunity by bringing this back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alexandra Jackson.
Mayor.
Oh, can we have his contact information? Who would like that?
I would.
Okay, I'll take it. I'd like it. Yes. Councilmember Bergen.
I'll send it to all of elected day.
Send it to the whole council, yeah.
Alexandra Jackson, followed by Robbie DeYoung.
Good evening, people of City Council and the mayor. As was stated, my name is Alexandra Jackson, and I'm a homeowner in Ward One, also known as East Colfax, Aurora Cultural Arts District, ACAD, and I just saw downtown Aurora. Since COVID-19 pandemic, I has, many people found themselves working from home and not only lacking, but fearing human connection. But one thing that I did for my health was to begin walking my two dogs that I have pretty regularly every day. My most active dog is an eighty-pound German Shepherd named El Myra, after the street that I live on. And on our walks, I learned about our neighborhood a little bit more and the people that live in it, including the fact that a lot of people in our neighborhood do own dogs and enjoy walking them as well. And this led me to reach out to my current City Council member, Crystal Morio, to talk about getting a dog park established in the area, just for residents near ACAD and kind of the neighborhood that's west of Central High School. I was able to look at recent City Council meeting minutes with Tracy Young from Park Recs and Open Spaces as a start to start to get some information. And currently, the closest established Aurora Dog Park is in Ward Two, which is known as the bicentennial dog park. And that dog park has a two-mile service radius, which falls a little bit short of really the whole northwest section of Ward One. And so, location, access water, or access to water, space, impact on the neighborhood, and parking are some of the considerations for developing dog parks. In Ward One, the neighborhood is densely populated per square foot, which is why it's even more important for folks to get out of their house and socialize with one another. And there are a lot of great green spaces that could be converted into a dog park. And I would really love to see just the ACAD downtown Aurora area become more walkable and invite residents to come out of their home. Walking to this dog park would be the most encouraged and utilized method of attending the park, much like our three successfully tended to community gardens that we have in our area. Moving forward, I hope to begin to gather feedback and data from my neighbor, my neighbors, and work with, further with my City Council member and any other relevant stakeholders or folks who are interested. And I plan to come back to City Council with that information and future steps. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Robbie DeYoung, followed by Tanya Tabachek.
Hello, everyone. Okay, in light of what I heard earlier, first of all, I want to say, I don't know which two of you has a good cologne on, but wow. And since humor is something that's good for the soul, everyone, what is this? Does everyone know what this is? Neither do I, but here comes a whole flock of them. Okay, now, down to serious business. Again, I'm with stolen and vandalized vehicles in Colorado. Two points I want to bring up today. Well, one. I have a member that sent me a message today, sent our group a message. She had her truck stolen. She was not notified by the police department that her truck was stolen. She was notified by M&amp;M, by mail. It took eight days before it got to her house. So a three-day period of where the city will graciously pay for impound is completely inefficient. This woman had to go in, and fortunately, she had insurance, and insurance took care of her impound fee. But there are so many people that I deal with on a regular basis that do not have the correct insurance or an insurance company, even if they have comprehensive, that will pay for all of the impound fees. A three-day period and being notified by mail. I don't know how some of these other people are getting their compensation given by the city, but there are more people that are not. Denver's impound lot is free. You know, you can be a month into it and you can still get your vehicle for free. I know where the two guys are still working on this. I've been dealing with you guys with this since April. And something's got to be done. Three days is not enough. M&amp;M is making over a million dollars a year on stolen vehicle fees. That's absurd. And I'm sure that once we get our own impound lot, which I'm really hoping that comes through, then that will change. But three days, I don't know who decided, who arbitrated that, but three days is not going to cut it, not going to cut it at all. So I would implore everybody to work on that, to get it resolved where people can have a little bit more time. A lot of people, which is a sad thing, a lot of people don't have the correct information on their registration, and so they can get a letter sent to them, but then they don't live at that address anymore and they have to go to another address. So let's think about that, okay? Thank you.
Tanya Tabachek, followed by Zach Heaton.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just have one thing that I brought up, I've looked at, that happened to my, in front of our house this last week and whatnot. It's basically dealing with the snow that we had twice this week and so forth. I want to read something first. It's one of the sections, section one twenty, I have failure to remove snow, failure to remove any accumulation of snow and ice from sidewalks under section one, two, six, dash, three, twelve, within twenty-four hours. After every snowfall, is hereby declared unlawful and constitutes a nuisance as snow obstruction and a hazard to the health and safety. I personally put salt on the sidewalk in front of our house, and I shoveled it, but by the time I went back at lunchtime, it was full, it was water. This curb, this is a constitute, the curb right beside the sidewalk was full of snow. And I'm like, well, I don't think that's my responsibility. My responsibility is the sidewalk and our driveway and so forth, but this, how, when you clear the sidewalk and the snow melts or, and then that, from the curbing goes back onto the sidewalk, could cause someone to be slid or fall or so forth. And we're right behind a school, and I think that's, they have different colors. I think it's green, which is the second after the main roadways. And our streets, they're close to the school besides that, are still full of snow, and the curbs are full of snow. So to me, that's not safe, but I was wondering, and I did get answers from other council members of who to contact, but there should be no retribution towards homeowners if the streets themselves are not cleared within twenty-four hours. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Zach Heaton, followed by Derek Stevens. Zach Heaton, followed by Derek Stevens.
Good evening, city council. I intended to make this address last Monday, but the schedule threw me off, so some of the tenses might be like a week old, just to let you know. Councilwoman Marcano, two Saturdays ago, your Instagram posted, reposted something from Colorado polls showing Zvonik in like a baby carrier thing on Coffin's chest, and I might disagree with the guy on a number of items, but the tabloid trash is kind of childish and unprofessional. It's unhelpful if the goal is to eventually be mayor. I mean, I do agree with your politics, but that's not how we're going to make friends. It's not how we're going to work together, so just cut it out, I guess. Councilwoman Drinsky is actually not here to hear a compliment from me, which dang, but I'm going to speak as she is here. I really appreciated a lot of the dialogue between her and Marcano during the last meeting. There was a conversation about the president of the Aurora Economic Council making an alleged $400,000 a year, and I thought there was a missed opportunity there. On this topic, I'd like to recommend a book to all of you guys called San Francisco. It's by Michael Schellenberger, and it's about how pseudo-government institutions take advantage of you guys rather than actually solve issues. If the AAC is taking public funds, then they owe the public transparency. And I get the argument about gender and all that kind of stuff. I have four nieces, and I constantly worry about the equity issues that they're going to face growing up. I would imagine Drinsky, being a successful veteran, businesswoman and city counselor, has gone through challenges that I will never understand. At the same time, if we set the example that the president of the AAC gets to hide behind her gender to avoid answering the question, that's pretty sketchy. So, please continue the fight for gender equity, but do not allow people to abuse the progress that strong women have made for us. Finally, to Mayor Protim Gardner, if we're going to stand here and demand that Sundberg go on trial, then I've got, I've got a trial for you. At the last meeting, I watched you, I think her name is Ellen, but I watched you put your finger in her face, you know, like this. And I don't agree with her on almost 99% of what comes out of her, but I admire her courage to come up here and speak. And I want to look at you and say, how dare you, as a counselor, and how dare you, as even a man, put your face, your finger in the face of another human being. On the gender quali, on the gender conversation, I want to know, would you have put your finger in my face rather than a short little Asian woman? It's a, it's a pretty profound question, I think. I can't change you. The fact that you don't even look people in the eye suggests that you don't care. Just remember that you won your election by a margin of 6,000 votes, when 70% of Aurora didn't vote. So, just be yourself, I guess. I'm probably running out of time, so I'll get ready to leave. I see talent with all of you guys. If I didn't mention you, keep up the good smile. Yeah, that's all I got. Oh, and the minutes about the full-time council initiative are still not posted, so whenever y'all want to get around to doing that, happy Monday. Man, look at that timing. I'm getting good at this.
Hello, mayor and council. I'm from Ward Four. My name is Derek Stevens, and I'm going to share something important to you. I, I mean, I'm from Ward Six, Bergens, yeah. And I like that new rec center, but today I want to talk about the snow issue with the side streets. I've been in Aurora since I was like fourth or fifth grade. I graduated from high school in Aurora. I graduated from University of Northern Colorado. I have my MBA from Colorado Tech, and I'm a veteran of the US Army. But I'm kind of concerned about the side street non-issue. I have an SUV, but not everybody can get through those side streets. I think Aurora needs to come up with some game plan to deal with the side streets. Now, I love Aurora, but the side street issue, it really concerns me. And I have three solutions to solve that. Now, the city council meetings, I do, I don't come to every city council meeting, but I do watch on Zoom. It's better than watching the Broncos lose. So, I, yeah, so I do come out because at least you guys are getting stuff done. The Broncos aren't doing anything. So, I'm being honest with you. So, today, I took the time to drive all the way out here, just because I'm concerned about that. And the solution I think you can do is the mayor, I know, I know everybody up here does a good job, come up with like either, put a moratorium on building until you come up with a way to deal with the side street issue. My HOA president said, even if you wanted to deal with the side street issue, you can't do it because Aurora has a moratorium and a, and some kind of insurance issue, so even if a person has a company, they can't even touch the streets. So, if Aurora's not going to deal with the side street, snow issue, they come up with a training and charge people to do it if it's a certain, you know, certain level to just take, take care of the issue. And then another issue with the city council, everybody here works hard. I watch you guys, sometimes you guys go back and forth. Aurora should think about making, maybe making the city council people more full-time or pay them a lot more so they can deal with like the snow issue, because I think the snow issue is really a joke. To me, it's a joke. I mean, it's, you know, I have a snow blower and I have, but it, but it, that needs to be, so, and then, and then another issue is maybe build like an Aurora tech center, because Aurora has this thing of just building more houses, but then you're just going to build more houses, and then you're going to come back to the road issue that no one's going to, going to maintain. To me, that's, it's, it's a joke. So, so today, I just wanted, wanted to let you know that I am Aurora, I love Aurora, but I am concerned about the snow issue, and I, and I appreciate that everything that you guys are doing, and I love the fact that people can. One city council person said that you can't go on Zoom to watch it. I think whether you watch it on Zoom or you come in person is still important. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor, may I just make one comment?
Councilmember Bergen.
Thank you so much for, for the concern about the snow issue. I did want to let you and the audience know, because I know it came up with someone else, that on the February 6 study session, we will have Public Works do a presentation to talk about solutions for the snow removal on residential roads.
Okay, and I'll take this contact information.
Mayor. Can I also?
Councilmember Marcano. Is there any other public invited to be heard?
No.
Very well. Consent calendar, item 10.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we need to do adoption of the agenda first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion is in order for the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
It's moved by Councilmember Sundberg, seconded by? Seconded by Councilmember Coombs to adopt the agenda. Discussion, seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Kaufman. The motion passes to adopt the agenda.
Consent calendar, motion is in order for item 10A1 to 10A35.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
I would like to pull some items from the consent calendar. So, I would like to pull 10A15, 16, 19, 20, 23, 25, 29, 31, and 35. And I'd like to be able to, to pull them and have them bundled.
I'm sorry, what are you, bundled?
Meaning that they would be under one, one vote.
I don't think you can do that.
I think I can.
Procedurally. No.
Mayor.
Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you, sir.
Can I get a second first?
Oh, fair.
Okay, it's a, it's been, you don't need a second for that.
I just made a motion.
Second.
For what?
She wants those removed from consent.
Councilmember Bergen.
But it doesn't, any member can remove it from consent.
Can you state the numbers again so I can make sure I have them right? 1015, 16, 19, 20, 23, 25, 29?
31 and 35.
31 and 35.
Okay.
So, the other step, and I, I want to make sure I'm doing this. The other step is, we want one presentation, that, sorry, Councilmember Bergen wants one presentation from staff and then work through the list.
We have to vote on them individually, am I correct?
So, if we pull them off consent calendar, we'll have to vote on them individually, but we can't have staff do one presentation.
Okay, very well. Okay. So, motion is in order then for item number?
Mayor, I believe Councilmember Bergen did motion, and then Mayor Protim Gardner had a second.
They, so they, they moved it and then took the individual items out of it, very well. Discussion on the consent calendar, with the exception of item number 15, 16, 19, 20, 23, 25, 29, 31, 35.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
I would like to also remove A13, 10A13.
13. Very well. So, then, voting on the consent calendar, all items except 13, 15, 16, 19, 20, 23, 25, 29, 31, 35. Discussion on the consent calendar. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the consent calendar minus number 13, 15, 16, 19, 20, 23, 25, 29, 31, 35?
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Mario. Thank you. The motion passes to adopt the consent calendar with the requested items removed.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 10A13.
Item 10A13 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement Metro Community Provider Network.
Brief presentation by staff.
Did you want a separate presentation on just this item?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is part of our nonprofit grant program. We had $2.5 million that was allocated to this program. And this particular program, this is for a dental clinic renovation, and we have the agreement in your packet.
Questions to staff?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
My question is just if the applicant is available to provide any answers as to how long they intend to keep that facility open. So, are they available to answer that question?
I don't believe the nonprofit representatives are available for this meeting.
Okay. I have heard some concerns that, that there's going to be closing of some of the clinics from this organization in North Aurora, so I am not going to support this without that information.
Further discussion, Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you, sir. This would apply to this specific item and any future ones here that we may discuss. I'd like to make a motion to continue any items where we do not have a representative from the applicant present to answer questions from council, seeing as, until this very moment, I don't think most of, well, at least several of us on here had no idea what issues were being taken with, with specific items. And I think that it would be, it's fair if we can actually have representatives from the applicants be here to answer questions from council.
I think you should do it on each one separately, and that's the advice of council.
Okay, sure, we can do that. So, I would move to continue this item until we can have a representative from the applicant be here to answer questions.
Moved by Councilmember Marcano to continue the item, seconded by?
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs. Discussion, seeing no discussion, call for the question on the Marcano motion to, to continue. Item number 13.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
The motion passes with nine yes votes, no one vote from Mayor Protim Gardner to continue this item.
Okay. Now, staff could give a presentation on item number 10A15, 10A16, 10A19, 10A20, 10A23, 10A25, 10A29, 10A31, 10A35.
Mayor, can I ask a question before we proceed?
Council, uh, Mayor Protim Gardner.
And I don't know who this would be for, for someone on staff. Were these organizations informed that these items were on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
So, they should have been here, correct?
Not, not necessarily. They weren't requested to be here.
Well, I would expect them to be here if they have an item on the agenda where they're getting money from the city.
Okay. Presentation.
This is for 10.
Councilmember Bergen.
I asked, I didn't want a presentation.
I thought you wanted a joint presentation on all of them together.
And this item is for reading instruction for immigrant and refugee students to help them be better prepared and be able to meet their grade level or exceed their grade level.
Questions to staff on item number 10A15?
Okay, Mayor?
Councilmember Bergen.
Actually, this was not my motion. I wanted, I pulled all these and wanted one presentation, just a synopsis. We've gone over these many times during numerous study sessions.
Well, I'm not clear on what your, you said one presentation.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just, basically a blanket presentation. We've, we've reviewed all of these. We don't need a, I don't want a presentation.
What constitutes a blanket presentation, please?
Or none.
Or none, well, then why don't you make a motion to reflect that?
Could you just do a brief presentation of all the nonprofits as to what, you know, what process we've already gone through?
Okay.
Sure. And so, these nonprofits, this is part of that grant program. We had a, some city staff that were on a committee. We reviewed the nonprofits for a number of items. We wanted to make sure that they had good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State, that they had an IRS tax exempt status, they had an Aurora business license, and they also had liability insurance. And then they were also reviewed for things like project readiness, the organizational capacity, how well they would benefit the needs of Auroraans. Thank you. Mayor?
Councilmember Bergen.
So, I did do my homework. Thank you very much for the operating budgets for each one of these. I went through them diligently. And the reason I pulled these, because I have major concerns on, on the organizations. A lot of them had at least 50% of their, of their, their requests going towards personnel salaries and benefits and not towards programs. In fact, in fact, some of them were really difficult to even delineate whether any money was going towards programs. I'm just going to get, I'm not going to go through every single one of them. I'm just wanting to make a statement that I did do my due diligence, and I take it very seriously as my obligation to the public for making sure that their taxpayer monies are used responsibly. And this is really important, we want to make sure that we fund the right organizations that are doing good work. I'm not saying that these, that these that I pulled are not necessarily not good organizations. I just find them troubling in terms of the information that I found. I would say that if, you know, in future rounds, possibly, then we could reconsider them, and we do not have to spend these ARPA monies until the end of 2025, I believe. So, just one example, and again, I'm not going to go through every single one of them, but a lot of them had the same issues with, with the salaries versus allocation towards actual programs that would actually help our residents. Some of them are Denver-based. Now, some of them are Denver-based, but they have a good nexus to Aurora in terms of helping, you know, our residents, but some do not. One of them, I mean, it's literally, someone in grade school could have done this budget. And, and it is someone, I don't even want to embarrass the organization, but most of the money is going towards the rent, the water, the utilities, their car and truck maintenance, gasoline, again, salaries, which was, on this one, was almost, what? Well, more than, probably about 60% or 70% of the entire budget. This is a, this was a request by someone that says they're paying rent, but yet their mother owns the house that, that, where the residence is, and it's a personal house. And so, we would basically be given money for in addition to their house and for an upgrade of a bathroom remodel to increase their equity. They could turn around tomorrow and sell it, and they would have made money off taxpayers. That's just one example. So, that is why I'm pulling them, and I would urge my colleagues to vote no on these that I pulled for now. We can reconsider them later, but I think more due diligence needs to happen.
Will the clerk now please read the title to item number 10A15?
Item 10A15 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement for Rocky Mountain Welcome Center.
Motion? Was there a motion already made on all these?
No.
No. Motion is in order.
Oh, well, I need to make a motion then on, on 15.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Nope.
I'm sorry, what are you?
Okay, so, we just went over 10A15, correct?
Correct. Correct. So, yes, we need a vote.
We did 13, okay. We did 15, but we have to vote on them individually. Am I correct?
Right. And we just did 13. We delayed.
Mayor, point of order, if I may.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Councilmember Bergen introduced the item. We have not had any discussion. I don't think you even got a second on your original motion. So we skipped from that after she spoke to a completely different item.
Okay, we're at 10A15 right now. And so a motion is in order for 10A15.
So my motion is to not fund 10A15.
Mayor, can I speak?
Is that, oh wait, is that, is it, no action, it kills it. So do you have to actually do a motion? You don't do, you don't move it to kill it. So what do you?
Someone should move it to pass.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember.
I'll move to pass this item to approve the funding for this organization.
It's moved by Councilmember Coombs, seconded by
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mario to approve item number 10A15. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Medina.
You have a couple of questions on here. Just in light of everything else that's been coming up around, you know, transparency and stuff. I sit on this board of the Rocky Mountain Welcome Center, so I want to make sure that that's disclosed first and foremost. And I'll recuse myself from the voting on that just because of transparency. And this kind of leads me to what we talked about last week with the AEDC, is that we have six council members that were part of that board, but none of them stated that they're on this board, yet we approved half a million dollars without asking them for their financials. We're asking them for all the same vetting process that I think that if we're going to do it, be so scrutinized for $5,000, $10,000, and we're going to give half a million or more, then we should be doing the same thing across the board and being transparent. I'm being transparent and telling you. And I will recuse myself from this vote so that I do not have any say in this vote. So, in the fairness of everything, I think that we need to be consistent with what we say and what we do.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Coombs.
Is there a representative from this organization present to answer questions? Because it sounds like there are specific issues that people have, so I think they should be given that opportunity.
Uh, wait one second. Procedurally Okay, is there anyone present? Very well. Further discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this to our next regular meeting and ensure to invite the applicant so that they can answer the questions proposed by council.
Is that a substitute?
Yes. So, motion continue.
So a motion to continue. Is there a second, moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by Councilmember Coombs to continue. Item number 15, 10A15. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Bergen.
We have gone over these so many times, and I, I don't understand why we would continue it just to hear from the applicant. I find that they are, they, like, all the organizations that I pulled have, like, serious issues with their budgets and what programs they offer. This particular one only served nine people, and it was basically for the amount of grant that they want. That's $1,100 a person. Couldn't figure out how they really helped that person. There's, we need to really scrutinize how we're spending our taxpayer dollars, and I will be voting no on continuation. I find that they should not receive the monies at this time.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor Potem Gardner.
Thank you. Yeah, as far as the topic of whether or not they're here, you know, in my outside employment, when I have things on council agendas in other cities, staff doesn't reach out to invite me. That is my job, to be there to advocate on behalf of my employer. And so frankly, I don't really have sympathy if you didn't come tonight. Your item was on the agenda. You should have been here to be ready for it. If not, then we still need to vote on it. It's on the agenda. You don't need a handwritten invitation in fancy letterhead to know that you need to come when you have something on the agenda. I think as far as what Councilmember Bergen is talking about, just kind of generally, you know, I agree. I think there's a lot of issues here. And, you know, I want to give credit to staff because I think staff has been really responsive in terms of providing additional information that councils asked for, and I know we've delayed this several times, and I'm sure that's been frustrating. But I think the issue has been and continues to be that several of these organizations, I'm not sure that there's any value going back to taxpayers because there is so much of their expenses going towards salaries. And, you know, some organizations, 70, 80% of their expenses are going to salaries. That's, i.e., executive directors making big money, which was an issue last week with the executive director of AEDC. Sounds like not so much anymore. And that's really the issue here, is that this might be ARPA money, federal government money, and I know sometimes it's easy to think, well, that's federal money. It's still taxpayer money, and it's still our job to advocate on behalf of taxpayers. And I want to be sure before I'm going to support any of these, that we, that there is, the money's going where it needs to go, and that it's bringing value back to our residents. And in a lot of these cases, by the time rent is paid and salaries are paid and all these other things, there's not any money left over for programming, and that is a big, big issue. So, you know, whatever we want to do in terms of delay it or not, I think that's silly to delay it. They had an item on the agenda tonight. They should have been here. That's their job. And so I would urge my colleagues to not support delaying these any further. We've had plenty, plenty of conversation.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
So I do think that if we're going to say we're not going to give people a chance to speak, and we just want to not fund it, then having a general comment that lumps all of the organizations together as our justification isn't really reasonable. We need to talk about each item. So instead of saying, some of them did this and some of them did that in a very general way, like, I understand your comment about the only serve nine people on this one, but to just be general and sweeping on, I want to oppose all of these without talking about it, like, that's, to me, not really giving each individual organization a fair hearing. So that's the only thing I'll say is, okay, if we don't want to have them come and answer for what we have to say, fine, but let's be specific about each one instead of making generalities across the board.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. I actually want to disagree with my colleague here. I don't think that we've actually had discussions on these. In fact, I remember before the holiday break, when I asked you all to identify the issues you had with each of these ones, I was given two very general statements, and I promised that more would be discussed in the future. So we set up a study session meeting. In that study session meeting, staff just ran us through their process, which I appreciate it. Thank you for that. But we didn't actually discuss the merits of any of these specifically. So now that you're here to identify them, this is great. And I think that these warrant more discussion, so that's why I want the applicants to be here to provide either important context, or frankly, to just not have answers that are suitable, where then we will, you know, not approve ones that we don't find worthy.
Mayor.
But what I want us to do is actually have the discussion and get into the weeds a little bit. I think this is a valuable analysis first, so.
Councilmember Lawson.
Oh, sorry.
Mayor? Thank you. So I just have a, I just have a general question for staff, and I appreciate you, you know, working on these. But again, I'm kind of agreeing with some of my colleagues about the personnel, because even when we're talking about the youth violence NOFA as well, it's always, what about the program and what it's going to do and benefit the community and the people that it's supposed to serve? How much emphasis on the scorecard that is being evaluated, which I hope it would be a little bit more than what I'm seeing in all these operating? Because I went through all of this, too. And it's just a lot of personnel. It's a lot of things about getting things established, but not about the programming, which I think is really essential. So can you just tell me in general, what, how much on the scorecard is evaluated for programming? And I'm talking about actual things that help people and the community.
Well, we did use that as one of the criteria. I think on a lot of these nonprofits, they need their labor. They need their staff. They need to pay the salaries in order to provide the program. There's not a lot else that's really a deliverable, except the people's time providing that program. So I think that might be part of this, but we did do a lot of reviewing what they were talking about in the application as far as what they plan to deliver to the community.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Lawson, then Councilmember Bergen.
So I understand that. I really do. I understand it takes personnel. It takes people to do an establishment of a program. But again, in a lot of these things that we've been evaluating, it's not really an established program of how it's going to benefit people. Like, what is it? I mean, I understand you have to have things and people to do the program, but I guess on the scorecard that you guys are using, I might be saying the wrong scorecard, how much of the evaluation or points, to me, should be a lot more on the program? What is this program going to do, or what, how are you going to help these kids? How are you going to help these individuals? How are you going to help this community, this neighborhood? So I guess I'm just, I understand what you're saying, but to me, it should be on what is the anticipation of the program that you're going to be establishing? A lot of these nonprofits already have programs that they've already established. But on these applications, when I went through, you see nothing but salary, you know, things, building things that they want to do, which I understand they need, but nothing really about the program and how it's going to really help people. So that's my evaluation of that.
Mayor?
Further, uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't need to go through and give you an explanation. I am happy to give the nonprofits that I decide not to fund personally. I don't know how my colleagues are going to decide on this, but I will be happy to sit with them after the vote and let them know why I did not support them. And again, these funds are still available, so there's, there could be another opportunity. I did my homework, and I don't need to give you, you know, on every single one of these, and first of all, it could be a little bit embarrassing to those organizations. I would rather have a private discussion with them.
Further discussion, uh, Councilmember Coombs.
So, first of all, it's not about me. It's about the public, being public with our justifications. And I think being public with our justifications before the fact, not after the fact. But that's separate from what I wanted to say, which is, this conversation about programming versus staffing is confusing to me. If your program is education, a person provides education. If your program is service navigation, translation, interpretation, right? If it's a service that you're providing, it's people that provide that service. So that is the program cost. So I'm not sure if the expectation is that they put a program cost and the staff under it to identify that that's a program cost from the staffing. But staffing is programming. So that's, to me, I think, not really fair to say, well, all you pay for is the people that provide the program. Because that, it's the people. It's the labor, as staff had laid out, that are the program. So I'm certainly not going to tell someone that I'm not going to support them for paying their people to do the work in the community.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
And I took that into consideration on each one. Obviously, it varies. Sometimes they are very staff, you know, heavy, and sometimes it's going to be more, less staff, depending upon what the organization is. So I did take that into consideration.
Okay. The motion before is the motion to continue. Is there further discussion on the motion to continue on item number 10A15? Seeing none, call for the question on item 10A15.
Mayor Kaufman?
Uh, Mayor votes no.
Councilmember Sandberg? The motion does not pass with three yes votes, six no votes. Yes votes from Councilmember McConnell, Coombs, and Mario.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number 10A16?
Mayor, we still need a vote on the actual item for 10A15?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was to the motion to continue. Now to item number 15, item number 10A15. Is there further discussion on item number 10A15?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Mario.
Thanks. I recognize I probably should have made this after the general statement presentation, rather, because I feel like it's more appropriate there. But we're here in the process. So just wanted to offer my thoughts. Working for a nonprofit organization, maybe having a different relationship and understanding on how nonprofit organizations operate and do their work. I think it's a pretty common thing to write into grants the cost of your staff. As Councilmember Coombs stated, that this is how these organizations are fundraising dollars, right? They don't have a business where they have a specific revenue stream. They are trying to figure out how to afford their programming based on what's available, based on the stipulations that are put out in each different grant agreement. So to me, I don't have that same threshold because I operate in, you know, in a nonprofit industry, right? So I'm clear that that is a pretty common practice. You know, I guess two thoughts in addition to that. If we, as a council, decide that that's not the threshold that we want, I feel like we should be more upfront with that, as opposed to after the process is ensued, then deciding that there's this, you know, arbitrary threshold. And, you know, I mean that in that there, that is a person's, you know, informed decision, but that's a person's, a council member's perspective on grants. I feel like, in order to be more streamlined and to continue to build credibility, we keep putting stuff out there and then changing, you know, stipulations kind of after the fact. So I would encourage this body, if there's a big concern with that, to address that on the front end. I guess not, it feels kind of at the 11th hour at this point. You know, people are welcome to speak their mind as to why they would or would not vote a certain way, but I have issue, I take issue with the fact that we are putting out processes and then that can seemingly change in kind of a large swath. I wouldn't recommend that, personally speaking. Again, this is, this is the nonprofit industrial complex, right? This is how organizations who do this social good work fund themselves to do the work that we ask and that we can't do as a municipality, that we don't have the same ability to reach individuals and community to get the same outcomes, right? The greater good outcome. So I, I don't have the same, you know, threshold that we've been talking about, because I know that that is, that is a part of how you apply for grants. And if in the grant, it said you can't allocate a certain amount towards a certain expense, the people who applied would not have done that, right? So to like, now say that that's, that's the bar, the threshold, really concerns me. I don't feel comfortable using, you know, I don't have that same threshold, and I don't feel comfortable making that blanket threshold for these organizations that weren't given those instructions from the get-go. I feel like that's really communicating a wrong process and communicate, like, I don't know what people might say as a result. People might be concerned with bias, you know, towards particular organizations. And I'm not saying, accusing anyone in that way at this time, right? But if there's not, there's a reason why we have a standardized criteria, right, and we follow process, and then for that to change really makes me uncomfortable. So I wanted to just offer that, that that's kind of my perspective on the matter.
Further discussion on 10A15? Seeing none, question before is the adoption of item number 10A15. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman?
Uh, Mayor votes no.
Councilmember McConnell? Thank you. The motion does not pass with six no votes, three yes votes. The yes votes from Councilmember McConnell, Coombs, and Mario.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number 10A16?
Item 10A16 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, Hearing Voices.
Motion? Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
He can say, move to approve 10A16?
It's been moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by Motion fails for lack of a second. Would the clerk now please read the title to item number 10A19?
Item 10A19 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, Rise Colorado.
Motion?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Mario.
Uh, move to approve agenda item 10A19.
It's been moved by Councilmember Mario, seconded by
Coombs.
Councilmember Coombs to approve item number 10A19. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, question before is the adoption of item number 10A19. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman?
Uh, Mayor votes no.
The motion does not pass with six no votes, four yes votes. The yes votes from Councilmember Medina, McConnell, Coombs, and Mario.
Uh, would the clerk now please read the title to item number 10A20?
Item 10A20 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, East Colfax Comm- Item 10A20 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement: East Colfax Community Collective. And Mayor, we do have a few individuals who signed up to speak on this item.
Very well. Please proceed with the speakers.
Amy Ruth.
My name is Amy. I have lived in Aurora for more than six years. I think today is the day for me to speak up for myself, my family, and my people, and my community who cannot speak up for themselves. The people who are feeling hopeless and helpless. I am 21 years old. I came from, I came to this country back in 2017 as a refugee from Thailand. I am currently owner of home in Aurora and support my whole family by working multiple jobs, including being full-time with East Colfax Community Collective. In Colorado, everything getting so expensive right now. Working 40 to 50 hours a week can barely cover all your expenses a month. That's why we need more resources and organization to help us. When I say more resources and organization, you might think or say, in Aurora, we have a lot of resources and organization, right? I mean, that's right. I'm not saying that Aurora have no resources. They do have resources. But Aurora has resources, but not every organization have the capacity to help and support through their process. Do these, these organization guide you and support you with every step you ask for? Do they come to your house when you are disabled and unable to get a transportation to these sites? Not all the time, no. Think about it. I have witnessed it with my own eye. Disabled lady sitting outside the next door, the next door building, trying to get help applying for food stamp. All the, all the employee did was handing her the paper, the application, and tell her to return that back when she completed it, that application. She had no help or ability to ask for understanding. I have witnessed it, multiple people who do, who do not have English as their first language, go into the same building, looking for help. What are these people going to do with the application paper that you gave it to them? They just bring it home, call people around, hoping there's someone will help them fill out the application, so that they can submit their application as soon as possible for, for the approval. I understand that these organizations do a good work, and sometime they work more than the time they supposed to work. But that is why EC3 is one of the resources for our community, I want to say. EC3 believe strongly in language justice, to help and give extra support to those who navigating these. I speak seven languages, English is being one of them, but I am still needing help and support to figure out how I can help in this country that I am still learning. I was going through a rough, a rough time. I had to give an hour of my job. I got laid off from work because of the COVID, and I connected with EC3.
Time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Cortez.
My name is Victor. I'm here for representing Los Cuates on 11/24 Yosemite Street. I'm with the EC3, EC3, EC3 organization. I'm here for, well, I'm basically here for like, I want to ask you guys for something, you know, help for small businesses, because we struggle a lot to pay rent, to products and everything, especially now that everything went up. We, we need help. And EC3 has been there for me to help me with, like, grants, building a website for my businesses. And right now, they're helping me try and get a liquor license to see if that would, like, raise my funds to sustain the business, because as you see, nah, without the help that we received, we ain't, we ain't getting nowhere. So that's why I'm here to ask you guys for, to help the small businesses. Because I see a lot of businesses that are already established, getting all the money, but small businesses that are already going up, they don't receive nothing. So I want to see if that could possibly change. And that's why EC3 has helped me a lot with, you know, with, with getting more funds to, like, pay everything. And, well, I don't have a mo, we don't have much, we don't have a lot of time in the business. We only have like two years and a few months. And they've been there for me, and my, and my family, like, to help me get there. And, well, that's all I got to think. If you like to change that, thank you.
Are there any further speakers?
Yes, we have a few more. Magali.
Mi nombre es Magali Ballardo.
Good evening. My name is Magali Ballardo.
Soy de Aurora y tengo ocho años viviendo aquí. Contacté a EC3 en abril del año pasado para pedir ayuda para mi renta. Me ayudaron a ceder a tres meses de pago para mi renta.
I've been a resident of Aurora for the last eight years. And last year in April, señor dijo ocho, no? Yeah, eight years. Last year in April, I contacted EC3 to ask for rent assistance, and they provided me with three months payment for my rent.
No hubiera podido pagar mi, mi renta sin esta ayuda durante el proceso de ellos.
I wouldn't have been able to pay my rent without the assistance, as well as their guidance through this process.
Fueron muy atentos a mi, a mi situación con buen carácter para ayudar a la gente.
They were very, they were very attentive to my situation, very pleasant, a very pleasant attitude to help others.
Con la beca de ARPA, EC3 ha podido ayudar a mucha gente.
With the ARPA scholarship or grant, EC3 has been able to help a lot of people.
Tiene dificult, estamos en un momento muy difícil y económico.
We are going through a very difficult economic times.
Mucha gente tiene dificultad para, mucha gente tiene dificultad en el trabajo para pagar su renta.
People are struggling to, with their jobs and to pay, to pay for their rent.
Y mucha gente no puede con los sueldos que pagan ahora.
A lot of people have very limited income and cannot afford to pay for those things.
Con EC3 en Aurora tenemos un apoyo aquí con personas presentes atentas.
Having EC3 in Aurora is having an attentive support for us and ready to help.
Listas para ayudar, listas para ayudar a esta ha sido mi experiencia con EC3 y no he, no he conocido otra organización haciendo este trabajo todavía en Aurora.
This is my experience with EC3, and I haven't encountered another organization that can provide me with the same service.
Espero tomen en cuenta estas palabras y las consideren para la beca de ARPA.
My hope is that you take this in consideration when you are talking about the support for ARPA and for the grant for ARPA.
Espero tomen una buena decisión para ayudar a los residentes de nuestra comunidad.
I hope that you make the right decision in order to continue helping other members of our community in Aurora.
Muchas gracias por su atención y buenas noches.
Thank you so much for your time, and have a good evening.
Sana.
Good, good evening, everyone.
Ya me les sana, ya huelo Aurora.
My name is Sana Sama. I live in Aurora.
Ya, ya huelo con ilí, tachakatole, ya huelo peine, bale, ya tamata uaka, isisimajayale, kipue.
I've been living in Aurora for six years and a half, and during the time, I have a struggle. EC3 helped me.
Ah, wadi, ya, ya tapi no, haleo kala. Ah, we, ya edate wada, wita ju, le macha, macha nele EC3o, chago, ya bakoa bakaka, wadi macha ya ne, chago le ya dopu wekoni, chago wadi macha se, macha gudakani.
I want to tell you guys, please, support EC3 from helping me and the struggle that we have been through.
Chago, wadi macha, ya to, chago macha ya, ni ta suke ne.
I want them, I want you guys to support them, the organization, for the struggle that my people and my family that we've been through.
Tablo.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, Tui Tui.
Hello, everyone.
Chama name Tui Tui Angwa.
My name is Tui Tui Ang.
Chama Aurora manira senishi babi.
I've been living in Aurora about 10 years.
Ah, con kere, na taune sakuga chama Aurora ma Gordon Sky Sushi so viro sangtuli pue ba re she.
In the past, I have been opening my small business called Gordon Sky Sushi.
In 2019.
In 2019.
Ah, di chima, kobe, chama pue viro, kobe pia da da, chama ro sangpila ya ba re.
After that, I have to close down my business because of the COVID.
Ah, chama yo, chama yo ja yo, saima lolo da da, ne oslo, alo ka, mashiro pia ba re.
Both me and my husband need to stop working because we both support each other with my business.
Ah, di chima, sainla za o, enla za o, chama ro ma pue bo, malo la ba o.
At that time, we was really struggling to pay rent in our business, the place that we rented out.
Ah, di chima, EC3a ne viro, chama ne sa da viro, chama ya, ke ke re go, pia shen be ba re.
At that time, EC3 contacted me and then helped me with applying for rental assistance.
Ah, na bi, chama, sain piya mi pue ne chima lebe, chama ya, business go, duro ga kuny be ba re, oh, ah, abriwa me, online, onlinea ne viro, lo me osari o le duro kuny be re, na viro ba re. Ah, kola, whoa.
Website.
A website go le kuny be re.
After, not only they helped me with applying for rental assistance, paying for my rent, they also helped me open up my business again, applying for me to get more grants so that I can afford to open up my business again. And also EC3 do help me with opening up my website online.
Ah, chama lo mio be, ke ke pia ne le lure go le, EC3a de cha komi ne di re o le, duro kuny be ba re, nyaji.
Just like the EC3 helped me, they help a lot of small business organization around Aurora and Denver.
Ya go kuny ya ba re, EC3a chama ro kuny be ra, de cha lure yo.
EC3 has supported me through a lot of things and support a lot of different community.
Chama ga request ku lau chama re.
I do want to request something from you guys.
Ah, chama ro di EC3 ma, di lo mio kuny be ra da, lure lebe, kuny ya re, da, duro le, ye shi ma di mebo da go, di Aurora ga ne viro, tana ne pa ga ne viro, kuny be se chama re she.
My request is that, as EC3 helping our community, our people, to get back on their feet, I do want to ask you guys to approve and support EC3 so that in the future, EC3 can help and support a lot of organization in the future, or like, business in the future.
Ah, business ne ma mo ba o, EC3a ne viro, de cha mi da zure, ke ke pia ne le lure, alo sha daa asa, informa bena inare, so, go lo o duro akuny be re da, di apua si go, chama ro ya shi di meze chama re.
Not only EC3 helping with the businesses, they also do help the resident applying for rental assistance, food stamp, applying for, looking for a job and any other with all the resources. That's why I really do want EC3 to be a long-term organization so that they will be able to help a lot of our community in the future.
Chiso de ma re she.
Thank you so much.
Are there further speakers on item number 10A20?
Yes, Mayor, we have one individual that is on the call-in line, and that's the last one.
Neb, you are, you can speak three minutes. Is your line, thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Councilmember. My name is Nebbiu Osval. I wish I could have been there in person. I'm just getting back from traveling under the weather. I appreciate the, the opportunity to dial in. I'm a community organizer in the Ethiopian community. I've been doing that for 30 years. I am a co-founder of the EC3, and I'm currently serving as the Vice President of the diverse board. I really want to share with you over my 25-plus years of community organizing in Aurora, you know, particularly in the Ethiopian community. I've co-founded a number of organizations, like The Taste of Ethiopia, worked in community outreach programs at the Saint Mary Ethiopian Church on East Colfax, and, and volunteered for countless organizations. I could tell you from the bottom of my heart, I've never seen any organization that has been as effective as EC3 in terms of real help, helping the most vulnerable residents and small businesses, like EC3 has. And that's why I believe this represents a major milestone in our community, and, and that's why this organization means so much to our community. What, what this organization has done in helping our communities beyond the capacity of our churches, it's beyond the capacity of our volunteer organizations. What we've been able to do in the last three years and the track record of success is, is real. And it's helped real people from losing their apartments, homes, and, and helping especially our small businesses that I know that you all are very supportive of. And, and, you know, the work has, has been nothing short of a miracle, especially for our community during the, the COVID pandemic, when we were lost and, and our community members, they didn't know where to go to get help. And, and, you know, this organization stepping in has saved countless people, small businesses from closing, people from losing their home. There is a lot of organizations with focus on Spanish speakers. There's not one like EC3 that can, you know, speak Amharic, Taguanyan, Nepali, Swahili, French. I mean, we are really embedded in this community. We know them, we speak their languages, and, and we want to be partners with you and the city and, and helping alleviate some of the challenges our communities are, are faced. We're, we've been, done an amazing work connecting to the renter population, especially those that live in affordable housing complexes. Our meetings are bilingual every single time, our legal clinics, housing assistance campaigns, all, all of them are available in these languages. And, and, you know, and, and we, our small business collective serves almost strictly, 95% people of color owned businesses, and, and, and significant portions being owned by immigrants and refugees.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
No.
Very well. The motion is in order on item 10A20.
Mayor.
Councilmember Mario.
Move to approve item 10A20.
It's moved by Councilmember Mario, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember. Seconded by Councilmember McConnell to approve item number 10A20. Discussion. Seeing none, Councilmember Coombs.
Um, sorry, so, was there going to be any presentation from staff, or can we ask questions of staff?
Yeah, very well, questions of staff?
Is someone from the applicant available to come answer questions?
Is that, I mean, they've already presented and now they...
They should have.
They would have had to have signed up.
Okay.
I don't think that, that's not appropriate to have questions of...
No, they could have been, they could have been a speaker, but they...
But then there's no, well, going back and forth, no.
Point of order.
Questions of staff.
Point of order, please.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you. City Attorney Bratsman, in the past, we have allowed folks from the audience who have an interest in an item to come up and speak, even though they were not on the agenda and they had not signed up. So I'd like to know...
And they could sign up right now to do that, but, but, again, this is a regular agenda item, not a public hearing. So, they should, they should sign up to, to, to speak.
Which they did.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
So, City Attorney Bratsman, are you saying that we can't ask questions? So if I ask a question of staff and they don't know the answer, they can't ask that person that's in the audience that would have the answer?
And you should ask your question of staff.
Okay, so, there's been kind of a question and discussion about staffing, and one of the insinuations was that the staffing reflects high executive director salaries. So I was just wondering if there is any breakdown of those salaries available, like how many employees are employed in direct programming, and then also what is the salary of the executive director?
We don't have that available. As part of the grant materials, we asked for the organizational operating budgets, and so organizations broke down salaries as they saw fit.
Is the representative of the organization able to provide that information, then, of how much the executive director's salary is and how many employees are employed in programming? Can you come down to the...
Right.
You're back to, you're back to the same.
What's that?
You're back to the same. They should, they should sign up as a speaker.
They have to sign up as a speaker first.
Okay, the clerk's right there.
Clerk's right there.
Okay, do I just talk to you or do I... Okay. Hi, my name is Nadina Brahim. I am the organizing director at East Colfax Community Collective. In response to your question, Councilwoman Coombs, we currently have nine paid staff. The operating budget that we provided was for 2022, and within that nine staff, the executive director has a salary of $87,000.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bergen.
So I have the, and this is not a question, I have the annual budget that has payroll and payroll taxes of $558,208.61, employee benefits $34,435, and I could go on and on. Was not a question.
So I believe that that information was provided. Am I correct? Further discussion. Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption...
Sorry, Mayor, I actually did...
Councilmember Coombs.
I apologize. So, can you talk a little bit about the, kind of, the deliverables for this program? Like, how many people you're expecting to serve, and in the past, how your performance has been on the programs that you've implemented?
Certainly, Councilwoman Coombs, EC3 is really committed to building a multicultural community and really supporting residents and small business owners within East Colfax as well as Northwest Aurora. And even without Aurora funding, I do want to name that we have supported more than 190 households in acquiring more than $700,000 in rental assistance. That's just renters. On top of that, our Small Business Collective has been able to support more than 58 businesses in acquiring more than $400,000 in small business grants. A number of them, which we have seen today, where English is not their first language, and language access is usually the largest barrier for them, and we pride ourselves in the commitment that we have to language justice. In terms of our grant deliverables around that, it's really the raw numbers of who we're serving out there and how we're building that. I do want to also name that, as part of the budget for this specific grant, it is to help us expand our staffing base to specifically support more folks that are living within Aurora. With that being said, our deliverables are keeping a tally of how many people we are supporting through the business clinic, as well as our renters' legal clinic, which give folks access to pro bono legal services that have helped them navigate a lot of the legal jargon that exists out there, as well as the permitting processes, and better understanding what they need to ensure their sense of compliance within their sense of lease, whether it be a rent-based lease as a tenant, or on the business side, or the resident's side. Another piece of that is also keeping track of the number of households, as well as small businesses, that we're supporting with navigation processes. And as a part of that, we pride ourselves in our measurables and our goals being, how much money are we able to support those folks in acquiring by providing that navigation service? For example, if we're supporting a business with a, with a specific SBA-based loan, and we're able to help them secure a $150,000-based loan, we would count that as part of our base deliverable of the, of the business that we specifically supported with navigation, and then the $150,000 that we were able to bring back into there. For that reason, I know there's been a lot of conversation about why are there high staff budgets? And the thing is, is we pride ourselves in navigation. A number of people, there are services out there, there are resources out there, but people can't access them because there are a number of barriers that exist. And we pride ourselves as organizers, as well as community navigators, that understand these processes and can help people overcome these barriers to get access to these resources and services that are available to them.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Can I make a substitute motion? Or do we have a motion?
Oh, you can. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor, and certainly a substitute motion would be in order.
I would offer a substitute motion instead of the $337,000 that we would offer $150,000.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Portem Gardner to reduce the amount to $150,000. Discussion.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. That seems like a very arbitrary move, and I'd like some explanation from my colleague as to why she would propose that.
Sure, Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Because I was really going to actually not support the $337,000 at all, based on the budget that I have. That is an insufficient budget, first of all, because it doesn't show, you know, how many staff members or anything. It's just a blanket, you know, very elementary, I would say, budget for an organization of this size. It also is based in Denver. It also has some of their initiatives that I think are maybe more political in nature. So I, I understand, you know, some of the things that they do that, that offer good services. We also, just for the public, we are not, not funding every organization that came to us. We just did fund, I don't know, 10 or 12 of them, and some of them are duplicate services. And we have also not only funded today, but we have funded in the past in round one, ARPA dollars. And we have rental assistance that the city does. So there are a lot of duplication of services that overlap, and so that is why I'm offering an amendment to, to fund some of it.
Further discussion.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you. So I, thank you for explaining your rationale, Councilmember Bergen. However, based off of the turn from where you were to where you're at, this actually, I think, underscores the need for us to maybe continue the items that you have issues with, because I feel like we're operating under a lot of assumptions here, based off of an incomplete examination of financial documents...
I've read their website.
And a lack of understanding as to what some of these organizations may actually do. And we're going to be hurting folks who depend on these services. If there are weird things, like the restroom item that you pointed out with another item, that's something that definitely warrants some investigation. If there's not a good justification, I'm 100% with you in opposing the funding. We need to have that conversation first, and that's all I'm asking for. Because, you know, I understand that you're looking at, you know, stuff from a website. You might have had some extra documents that were not in our back up here, and that's great. But part of what we're supposed to do as a body here is be collaborative and actually communicate. And we have not gotten that. And when I have in the past pressed for specifics, y'all have come up short. So I'd like to actually have the conversation around the specifics. I think the public deserves that, your colleagues deserve that, and the folks who are applying to us for funds deserve that.
Further discussion on Bergen Amendment.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
I am not in support of continuing it. If you'd like, I can just refer back to not supporting it at all. I was trying to extend an olive leaf, branch, and to give some funding. There will be other opportunities to come back for more funding, if, but at this point, I'm not willing to continue it.
The motion on the floor is a substitute Bergen motion.
Mayor.
Mayor Portem.
Yeah, I, I think it's rather frustrating, Councilmember McConnell, for calling out the decision-making process for your colleagues. We all have different ways that we reach decision-making, and, you know, frankly, to assume that we don't have the information that we need to make a decision, and you do, is, it makes me shake my head. I appreciate this, this compromise by Councilmember Bergen. I have a lot of concerns with the, the activities that this organization does, for the most part, because I think most of them are county functions, health and human services functions, which is primarily why most of their operations are in Denver, because Denver is a county and has different functions than we do as a city here in Aurora. And going down this road will lead to a creep in the size and scope of government. If we continue to take on functions that are not... Did something happen?
The projector was over here.
So they, they turned off the projectors because they were running hot, if you could hear them, so you guys are on the side screens on the TV over here.
Yeah, it got really quiet. So anyways, I, that's what my concern is here. However, I do recognize that there is some, this good this, this organization does. But I do want to point out, the $314,000 that, that we are, were proposed to award this organization was by far the highest award of any organization in this list. And, you know, frankly, there's quite a few in here that I think do good work as well, and we funded it at a much lower level. So I think this is an appropriate compromise, and, you know, frankly, if, if there's not support for it, I'll vote no on the original request.
Further discussion on the Bergen Amendment. Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption of the Bergen Amendment to item number 10A20. Call for the question. On the Bergen Amendment.
Mayor Kaufman.
Uh, Mayor, what's your...
The motion passes with eight yes votes, two no votes from Councilmember Lawson and Mayor Kaufman.
So, now to the, to the main motion of, well, okay, the Bergen Amendment passed.
Yeah, so we have, it was moved by Councilmember Mario and seconded by Councilmember McConnell. So now we're on the main motion with the...
So we're to, we're to the item number 10A20 as amended?
Yes.
Okay, question before us now is, item number 10A20 as amended. Further discussion?
Uh, Mayor.
So just a clarifying. What you're voting on is to approve the grant amendment for $150,000.
Well, we already did that.
We already did that.
No, now it's to...
No, no, it's to approve the agreement for $150,000.
Okay.
No.
In total. The original, who you amend was the number, was the amendment.
It's, so it's, it's as amended, so I remember, I remember 10A20 as amended. Is there further discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Lawson.
So, Mayor, I want to, because I got confused. I was, I was going to go for the higher amount, so that's why I voted no on the amendment.
Right.
But if, can I change my vote to yes, then, so they can get the $150,000?
So this is the main vote right now, and if you want to pass the item with the...
Now we're to the main vote, but it's to 150.
Okay.
So it's, it's item number...
Yes, we're voting 150?
Yes. So it's item number 10A20 as amended, which is 150,000.
Mayor, I'm confused about that as well, so I want to vote for the full amount, so can we...
So Mayor, let me clarify. So Councilmember Bergen made a motion to amend the agreement for $150,000.
Right.
If you did not want it to be 150, you would have voted no, and then it would have gone, and if that amendment did not pass, then it would have gone back to the 300,000.
Correct.
But the amendment did pass.
The amendment passed.
Okay, so I, she phrased it as a substitute motion instead of an amendment, so that's what I was...
I don't know, is it a settled question? I think it's a settled question. It's a settled question. Further, okay, so we're to the, item number 10A20 as amended, which is 150,000. Further discussion.
Mayor. So our, our vote thing on the, on the laptop doesn't say as amended?
It is as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Mario.
Real quick, I just want to be clear. The first vote, we were just negotiating the number. This is to approve the agreement in general, including the negotiated amount. Also, just want to be clear, like, I fully support, I supported staff's recommendation for the full amount, and, you know, would love to see this organization continue to do their good work and hopefully apply for more funding in the future. I, I think y'all have demonstrated the impact and the level of community impact that you have, and I disagree with that, that reduction number, but I'd support something over nothing. So I voted to support the amendment, and I'll support the agreement as amended.
I did vote against the Bergen motion to support the full amount. So now the question before us is item number 10A20 as amended. Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of item number 10A20 as amended.
Mayor Kaufman.
Uh, Mayor, what's your...
The motion passes to adopt item 10A20.
Well, now please read the title to item number 10A23.
Item number 10A23 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, New American College.
Motion is in order on item number 10A23.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve 10A23.
Moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by...
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs to approve item number 10A23. Discussion.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. If my colleagues are going to object to this, I'd like an explanation as to why ahead of time. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, an explanation?
As to why they would object. This was polled, so my assumption is that someone has objected.
No, no one is, procedurally, that is not a requirement. You can certainly ask, you can certainly ask the question. A motion is, I'm sorry, did, was that moved?
You have a motion to...
Okay, motion to adopt item 10A23. Discussion. Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption of item number 10A23. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor, what's your...
The motion does not pass. It's a tie vote, because we have one council member absent for item 10A23. The no votes are Councilmembers Zavonic, Councilmember Lawson, Mayor Kaufman, Councilmember Bergen, and Councilmember Sundberg.
Please now please read the title to item number 10A25.
Item 10A25 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, Mosaic Unlimited, Inc.
Motion is in order.
Mayor, move to approve agenda item 10A25.
Moved by Councilmember Mario, seconded by...
Medina.
Uh, Councilmember Medina. Discussion on the adoption of item number 10A25. Seeing none, call for the question on item number 10A25.
Mayor Kaufman.
Uh, Mayor, what's your...
The motion does not pass with a tie vote for item 10A25.
Please now please read the title to item number 10A29.
Item 10A29 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, You by You, Early Learning.
Motion is in order. Fails for a lack of emotion.
Sorry, Councilmember Medina was trying to get his microphone to work.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Medina.
Motion to approve.
It's moved by Councilmember Medina, seconded by...
McConnell.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember McConnell to approve item number 10A29. Discussion. Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption of item number 10A29. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman.
Uh, Mayor, what's your... I stand corrected. Mayor, what's your...
Okay, the motion does not pass with six... Okay, the motion does not pass with six no votes for yes votes. The yes votes from Councilmember Medina, McConnell, Coombs, and Mario.
With the clerk now please read the title to item number 10A31.
10A31 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, Aurora Inner Church Task Force, Inc.
Um, motion? Item fails for lack of emotion. With the clerk now please read the title to item number 10A35.
10A35 is ARPA Nonprofit Grant Agreement, Issues of Life Church Ministries, Aurora.
Uh, motion? Uh, item number 10A35 dies for lack of emotion. Uh, with the clerk now please read the title to item number, uh, 10C1.
Mayor, that was approved with the, the rest of the consent calendar.
Oh, that was, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, so now we're... 11, with the clerk now please read the title to item number 11A1. Uh, we, do we take these all as consent now?
Yeah.
Yes.
We are...
Okay. What's that? Okay, uh... So, we, we still need a motion, right?
Yes, so this would be...
11, 11A1? Or...
11A1 through 11A7 as consent calendar, unless somebody wants to remove an item for discussion. And I, we do have individuals signed up to speak for item 11A1 and item 11A6.
Okay, uh, please, uh, we'll proceed then with, uh, public invited to be heard on this.
Item 11A1, Robbie DeYoung.
Okay. Mayor, council members. Aliyah Cortez was murdered by a 16-year-old, and we don't know who they are. Is that fair to her family? Is that fair to the rest of us? That this person is not being held accountable to the community? And that his name is withheld because he did an adult action that took the life of another 16-year-old? I don't understand why this is even being proposed. If you do something like murder somebody, you vandalize, uh, their car, their home, you steal their car, and I don't care how old you are, you need to be held accountable. And if you're not being held accountable because you're the under, the age of 18, then your parents need to have their name put up where everybody can see their name. I don't believe that this is fair. I don't think this is right, that we would withhold somebody's name just because of their age. If, if you're talking about, you know, they, they went in and they stole some stuff at Walmart, or they went in and they, um, vandalized, uh, somebody's sign, uh, fence on the side of the road, that's one thing. But when they commit murder, when they cause damage to someone's life, then, uh, then either their parents need to be put out on the media, or they need to be. And that's my stance on that one. And I know I didn't make a lot of friends without them.
Uh, Pete, uh, Schultz. I believe this, this applies to juvenile defendants, does it not?
Victims and...
The victims.
Yeah, so the, the current law only applied to the victims. What the proposal is, is to add it, uh, to every juvenile involved in the case.
The, you're referring to the defendants?
And the defendants. So, defendants by design, the defendants are never public, because under the juvenile justice system, it's rehabilitative in nature, or the adult system is punishment in nature. So, that was already the law.
And Mayor, this is, um, Megan Platt with the City Attorney's Office. Unless they're being adjudicated as an adult based on the level of crime, like a murder or some, um, status offense that requires adult adjudication, that information is publicly releasable. This, um, this proposed legislation would only protect juvenile crime victim names, where historically, they've been enumerated under Title 18 as only sexually-based offenses, and it would apply now to all juvenile victims of crime for redaction in public records.
Okay, very well.
And witnesses, yeah.
And witnesses, okay. Um, and, see, we have one other?
So, then the other two individuals signed up for 11A6, so they can speak now? Or we can adopt the consent calendar and remove any items?
Well, let's go ahead and have them speak now.
Okay, Zach Keaton.
Good evening again, everyone. Um, so I'm going a little bit off the cuff on this one, because I think that the first reason that my attention got drawn to this is 11A6 is talking about modifying the rules about public input. I would hate to rob, uh, Gardner his, uh, opportunity to be lectured by me, so I want to make sure that I'm not losing my opportunity to that, because it's not exactly clear in your documentation what you want to do. But I also wanted to take a point and talk about public comment and how complex that is. I'm gonna humbly say that I'm a bilingual software engineer. Uh, I think God blessed me with a pretty solid brain, and, uh, this system confuses the living Jesus out of me. How someone who has no education is, uh, supposed to come and participate is laughable, to be honest. Just to name a couple of the rules that I've gathered, that I kind of just have programmed into this, is you have to be signed up between Friday and, um, Monday at 12:30. Today, I missed at 12:30, but I know because I've talked to Katie over here, who's been great, and has let me say, like, as long as I get in by 6:29, I'm good. But if the agenda item has started and you want to talk about an agenda item, which is different than just normal public comment, then I have to walk my ass all the way up to the top there and interrupt rudely while someone's talking, taking up their time. I have to get a big slip, take her attention away to give a slip to her, and then hopefully I'll get in before 11A6 is called. But I've done it before. If 11A6 is not called, oh, then I've already missed my shot. So, I do track all these systems and processes, honestly, I think better than some of you guys do, but I digress. Um, so please, either simplify your system or attend a workshop to understand your damn system. It's kind of frustrating as a public, uh, like, I'm 32, some of you double my age. Please, for the love of Christ, please. We, we've been here since 6 o'clock, going in circles. You guys are giving me a headache. I love you all, God bless.
Okay, uh, we have one other?
We do, uh, on the public call-in line.
Uh, you are live, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Uh, we have one other?
Hi, this is Pat. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Pat. Um, I would like, I would like to point out...
Pat, if you're listening on another device, you need to turn that down.
Um, I'd like... Okay. Can you all hear me now?
That's better, thank you.
Thank you. Should I, should I, um, start?
Yes.
Um, I would like to point out that subsection five of the resolution, uh, states, "In addition to appearing in person, the city manager will provide means for the public to participate in city council meetings remotely via video conference and/or telephone." That's our call-in line, that's great. Having access to the, uh, call-in line would ensure access to so many people. Presently, no one can speak at the end of the council meeting, as we have done in the past. Also, there is a 20-person limit to the number of people who can address council at the public invited-to-speak session. Council can vote to allow or disallow more than 20 people. That's never been done before. However, on a positive note, by approving subsection five of Juan McConnell's resolution, it will show, um, show the public how serious council is in protecting our right to speak via video conferencing and/or telephone. Please vote yes, so there won't be another roadblock when it comes to addressing the council. Thank you very much for your time.
Then, uh, uh, motion is order for item number 11A1 to item number 11A7.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
I would like to pull 11A7.
Um, and then the question before us is the adoption of item number 11A1 to item number 11A6. Um, a motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to approve 11A1 through 11A6.
It's moved by, uh, Mayor Protam Gardner, seconded by...
McConnell.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell to approve 11A1 to 11A6. Uh, with now, with the clerk now please read the title to 11A7.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we...
Are we at the vote?
I'm sorry. Oh, gee, yes.
Don't we get...
Okay, uh, discussion on item number, uh, 11A1 to 11A6.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. I do want to address, um, Zach, who spoke on 11A6. Um, I agree, our current process is convoluted. It used to be much simpler, you didn't used to have a time limit. That was something that this current council changed early on. I disagreed with that mo- with that. Uh, they also, as our caller mentioned, got rid of the public invited-to-be-heard period at the end of the meeting, which is something that I found very useful before I was on council, because things would happen up here during the meeting that you might want to give us feedback on, but you weren't able to do that until two weeks on most, uh, in most circumstances. So, that's something that this council made the decision to change. We could also change it back, so if y'all feel strongly, lobby the folks around me here.
Uh, further discussion on, um, on the consent, on item number 11A1 to 11A6? Uh, seeing no further discussion, the question before us is the adoption of item number 11A1 to 11A6. Call for the question?
Councilmember, oh, thank you. The motion passes to adopt the consent calendars, consent calendar items 11A1 through 11A6.
With the clerk now please read the title to 11A7.
Item 11A7 is Resolution 202312, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado to amend the rules of order and procedure for the Aurora, Colorado City Council regarding motions to end debate.
Um, motion is in order?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Move to approve 11A7.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by... Councilmember Medina, approve item number 11A7. Uh, discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Um, so as I mentioned during study session, um, I wish we had a council where this was not even necessary to contemplate, but I do feel that this rule has been abused in the past, um, so I will be supporting moving this forward, and I suspect that my colleagues are not going to be in a position or probably have the desire to filibuster like we see in the, at the federal government.
Further, uh, discussion on item number 11A7? Uh, seeing none, question before us is the adoption of item number 11A7. Call for the question?
Councilmember Mario.
Sorry, would you mind, uh, my technology just, yeah, went out. Uh, would you mind just repeating, um, the, the, the vote real quick, the...
This is for item 11A7, Resolution 201312.
Sorry.
This is for...
Motion to end debate.
The rules of order and procedure, motions to end debate.
And this would be to... Sorry, I'm just running on nothing right now. I just don't have the text, sorry. Um, one moment. Um, okay, uh, yes.
The motion does not pass with three yes votes and six no votes. The yes votes from Councilmember Medina, McConnell, and Mario.
Okay, uh, with the clerk now please read the title to item number 17A.
Item 17A is approval of the city manager's appointment of Alec Otten as fire chief.
Uh, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have, uh, I would like to select Alec Otten as the next fire chief for the City of Aurora. We went through an interview process several weeks ago. Uh, Mayor and council members were, uh, given the opportunity to, to interview. We had a good community connection and, and input. Um, we had four good candidates. Alec, uh, has spent four years as chief of the Henrico Fire Department. He was four years as a deputy chief prior to that. The Henrico County Department, uh, where he has served, is similar in, in size to our department. It actually serves a larger geographic area than our department, has, uh, more firefighters and more stations, so he's, uh, handled that department very well. They, like Aurora, are an ISO-1, uh, department. He also, uh, is an assessor for the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. An assessor, uh, they have assessor parties that go to different departments and, uh, go through the accreditation process with them. He's also recently been named to the Board of Directors of the Center for Public Safety Excellence, so he has very strong background, and, uh, I'd ask that you, uh, vote for his approval.
A motion is in or, order?
Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Protam Gardner.
Motion to approve 17A.
It's moved by Mayor Protam Gardner, seconded by...
Sundberg.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember Sundberg to approve item number 17A. Discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Protam Gardner.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to say thank you to, um, city manager and, and quite a few members of the community and, uh, other executive staff and all those that were involved in the process, um, of selecting a, uh, fire chief. I, I think we have, um, four really good candidates, particularly, I just want to say thank you to, um, our interim chief, Al Robnett, um, for both his decades of service to the city, and then also for stepping in, um, on an interim basis to lead the department, uh, during this transition. Um, you know, I really appreciate him applying for the permanent job and, um, uh, also, like I said, his, his service to the city. Um, and then, you know, lastly, just, uh, want to say, I'm excited to, um, have, uh, Chief Otten come to Aurora. Um, I think he will be good for our city and good for our fire department.
Further discussion? Seeing none, question before us is the adoption of item number 17A. Call for the question?
Mayor Kaufman.
Uh, Mayor votes yes.
I closed my laptop, I'm a yes.
Okay, and Councilmember Mario.
Mine is back on, and it's still not pulling up, but I am a yes.
The motion passes...
Can you guys hear me?
Oh.
Oh.
Who's that?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure this was a 10-0 vote, you're in, he votes yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 17A.
Uh, reports, uh, Mayor has no report. Uh, Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for the... Sorry. Um, Congress has completed committee assignments, and we should soon know when appropriation requests will be due for FY '24. Senate Bill 03, the Colorado Adult High School Program Bill, has advanced through committee with testimony from the City of Aurora. The city did take a supportive position on this legislation. Senator Fields' bill for deletion of child's name from criminal records has been released as Senate Bill 2375. And then, um, my next report, um, next month is Black History Month, so Aurora TV, um, will be having a special called "Celebrating Black History Through the Arts", and it will start showing on February 1st, so you can watch this on Comcast 880 and at auratv.org. And that's my report, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Gardner, uh, Mayor Protam Gardner.
No report.
Um, uh, Councilmember Zavonic.
No report.
Um, Councilmember Mario.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just that, uh, my town hall, uh, for this month will be, um, February 23rd, the fourth Thursday, at the MLK Library. Um, we had an agenda-setting meeting, um, a week ago, um, so I'll be using those topics that we discussed, and folks wanted to learn more about to plan future, um, uh, town hall subjects. Um, and then, sorry, one more. Um, just wanted to say that I'm excited to be participating in the City's Aurora Point and Time Count, um, of my five years on... Of my five years on council, they're always held on Monday, except this year. So that's something that I'm looking forward to, supporting our staff and kind of seeing boots on the ground, what that experience is like, and trying to reach and engage folks who are experiencing homelessness. There were volunteer shifts available. There might still be, if you look online otherwise. I look forward to volunteering with other councilmembers and residents who have volunteered for the opportunity. Thanks.
Councilmember Sundberg.
Just very briefly, Mayor, thank you. I attended the force review board of the Police Department. I encourage everyone to do that, to see our continuous improvement policies and techniques to, to look at when and if force is used under great scrutiny, to just evaluate that entire process, make it better. Town hall was a success, even though it was so cold. Got to learn about the direction of Aurora Public Schools, as well as our incredible school resource officer program and their heart for our children. I would encourage everyone to attend a wellness court graduation, which occurs maybe every three months or so. A gentleman named Bob went through the program. He was 21 months, 17 days sober. A brand-new life. His family was excited for him. A great microcosm of success, of healing that's taking place, that I'd like to see on a grander scale in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just have my next town hall, which will be this Wednesday, February 1st, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Active Adult Center. We'll be talking about neighborhood watch in our area. And I will also be joining Councilmember Murillo tomorrow morning at 5:00 a.m. to do the point in time count. Thank you.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next Ward Four meeting is going to be Thursday, February 9th. That's 6:30 p.m. at Colorado Early Colleges. That's at 1400 South Abilene. We're going to continue the really lively conversation from our January meeting around Aurora Public Schools and Educational Attainment with Dr. Ann Kiki. And then we're going to have a presentation for, from our budget manager, Greg Hayes, about the current city, the city's current financial outlay, some of our deferred maintenance and capital improvement backlog, and how debreasing might tie into all of that. So I hope you all can join us for that meeting. I think it'll be a really interesting conversation.
Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor. My next town hall is Tuesday, February 21st. And then I also do have a quarterly Saturday town hall. So the February 21st meeting is at the Central Rec Center at 6:00 p.m. And then on Saturday, February 25th, we'll be at Mission Viejo Library at 10:30 a.m. And I did also just have an agenda-setting meeting for my last town hall. So I will be putting out topics for the remaining town halls coming up. And then for Mile High Behavioral Healthcare, we had our first board meeting last Tuesday at the Montview Facility, which is going to be the location for the Colfax Community Network, as well as child and adolescent mental health services within the City of Aurora. And it looked wonderful, although it was very much conceptual. Construction is about to be constructed, or about to be commenced with funding from the City of Aurora, as well as Adams County, to support that program. And Mile High has also been activated for cold weather consistently throughout November, December, and January, providing emergency shelter services to our residents and to people experiencing homelessness in our community. And hopefully, it will warm up, and they will not have to continue to activate to keep people from freezing in these really horrible conditions that we've been having. But in the meantime, we support that, or we appreciate that work, and I hope that we can make sure that we're adequately supporting that work. Thank you.
Councilmember Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did a Facebook post about the Recreation Center, the Southeast Recreation Center grand opening. But I want to still just talk a little bit about the, the grand opening ceremony and ribbon-cutting to those of you that don't do social media. So last Tuesday, of course, was the grand opening of the Southeast Recreation Center and the Field House. And it was attended by some of my colleagues here as well. It really, I'm just very proud that we were able to, to get this funded and bring this amenity to, to all of our residents. It will serve primarily those residents in Southeast Aurora, but also Murphy Creek is just on the other side. So I know I met some residents there that were from Murphy Creek and were very, very excited to be there and to, to get a membership. It really truly is a gem for the entire city. I think I want to thank not only the colleagues that have supported the Recreation Center that are here, but specifically to thank those colleagues of mine in 20, that were, that voted for the funding back in the fall of 2018. A special thank you to them. I also want to thank the PROS and the Public Works Department. They put tremendous amount of hours into making this happen, from overseeing the project. PROS did a phenomenal job with three public engagement forums that we held at the Infinity Middle School, which is right near where the Rec Center is. And all that input that came in from the residents really helped the, the architect, you know, design the facility with those amenities in mind that they really wanted to see in the facility. Also want to just thank Saunders Construction, because they actually came in under budget and ahead of schedule, which is incredible, even during a pandemic. And then thank you for the incredible design team at Populous. And I know that they're going to, they're going to definitely win some regional awards, if not national awards. Because if you haven't had a chance to see the Recreation Center, just at least please stop by and, and take a look at it. It's something that, that all of us in Aurora should be proud of. And then thanks to Roberta Bloom and the Art in Public Places Committee, and to the artist Adam Buentes. The artwork in there is also beautiful. And then just lastly, a huge thank you to the community for all the, the support and the input. And I know it's going to serve thousands of residents for a very long time. And I know the kids are very excited about it. The, the kids that are at Infinity Middle School can literally walk to it. This, this big kid is excited to get a membership and start working out, because I don't, and I need to. But anyway, hope to see you there. So that's my thank you on the Recreation Center. Very quickly, my town hall, because of the snowstorm, was rescheduled. So it's this Thursday, February 2nd, 6 to 8, at the Public Safety Training Center on Quincy. And it is about the mineral leasing and the cap at Lowry Ranch. That's the primary topic. And then lastly, I mentioned this earlier, but February 6th study session, we had a lot of complaints about snow plowing. So please tune into that study session, because our staff will be looking at some solutions to hopefully alleviate that for you. So that's it. Good night.
Seeing no business. Further business for the Aurora City Council meeting adjourned.